...to come out and play sports and do activities at those locations. So the goal of this tonight is really, we want to be able to work with council to clarify the roles and responsibilities when we're working with those youth sports organizations. What are their roles for using the space and what is the city's role in using that space and maintaining it? We want to increase transparency. So as I discussed in your council communication doc, right now, there's really only one youth sports provider who has a facility use agreement and one youth sports provider that has an IGA. And those are the only two agreements we have, but we have multiple users. And so making sure that we are transparent in how we allocate those facilities and then also what are the requirements to use them? Who gets to use them? Who's the priority? Those are the things I'm talking about, about transparency. And then potentially looking at tightening those schedules. So right now, it's on a first come, first served basis with our cap limit of six months out. So that means you can't reserve a facility until you're within that six-month timeframe from the time your facility starts. And so that could open itself to one organization comes in and reserves all the fields first because we're on a first come, first served basis and leaves nothing else for other groups to be able to use. We like the idea of aligning rules across all of the leagues and just saying, hey, here is what it is. These are the rules when you're using our spaces. And then if council would like to have that discussion, clarify whatever fees council might be looking for. And so we can get into that and have any discussion. I'll answer any questions you guys might have. So with that, I've spoken briefly. We have two agreements. We've got one with the Verdi Valley Little League. That was a five-year termed agreement that just expired this year. And then we have the Mingus Union High School Swim Team who has an IGA with us, and I believe that still has two years remaining on that agreement with the high school. The high school is a little bit different than our normal ones. Again, it's an intergovernmental agreement, not just a standard facility use, but we also charge them for that space because it costs the city much more to operate that space, specifically the high school, because, and Madam -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] -- this one, typically, your pools are seasonal. They're Memorial Day through Labor Day. And so they would close in September. And so we keep ours open because we have a high school who utilizes our space. That then allows us to give that space back to the public for use as well. But that's why the high school gets a higher charge. In the summer, we have the Cottonwood Clippers who also use that space. Don't have an agreement with them yet, and so we'll discuss that a little bit. But we do charge them for that space, too, because of the high cost to operate those spaces, although it's at a much reduced rate of what Mingus pays because the pool is already opening and functioning during those summer hours. So with the Verdi Valley Little League agreement expiring, staff felt this was a really great opportunity to just gauge council's appetite on how we would like to move forward across all of our youth service providers. So we know we have to redo that one agreement. Is that the agreement this council would like to move forward and set standard for all of our youth groups? Or do we want to look at that and make some tweaks to it? So again, I spoke about our youth sports organizations. This isn't an exhaustive list. It's a fairly exhaustive list, but you can see we've got a lot of users on our public spaces. And for a lot of reasons. Cottonwood is the hub of the Verdi Valley, so we do share that burden, that responsibility. But the county doesn't have any sports facilities. Bridgeport doesn't have any sports facilities. Jerome doesn't have any sport facilities. And Clarkdale doesn't really have much, too. The school, Clarkdale Jerome School, does have some, but the city itself doesn't have it. And so you see all of those user groups relying on the city of Cottonwood to provide these spaces for their programs. So if you look down this list, you can see a lot of them, and some of them are competing. And so what that means is you're not just competing for kids, you're competing for field time. And then you look at that, and then you throw in the club teams also who want to utilize these spaces. And we run into situations where we have more requests than we do fields. And so I think this council is pretty aware of one of the ones we had last year. We had a user group unhappy with the field allocation. And so you all received that information. That was one of the reasons I wanted to increase our transparency and clarity on how this process goes and give council that opportunity to provide input and direction to staff. This Verdi Christian Academy, they are new. They haven't used our spaces yet, but it's another group who wants to use our outdoor pool during the summer. And if you are a pool user, you might already know that from the time that sun comes up to well after the time that sun goes down, that pool is fully functioning. And so it's really hard to provide additional space. And so having an allocation policy is going to be key for us to be able to help meet the needs of what our community is asking us to do. So again, the need for the facility use agreements. Right now, we operate on a first come, first served basis. All they do is they fill out our standard field application, same as any other person would, and we go ahead and we try to provide the space as best as we can. It operates on a first come, first served. So AYSO, for example, has 800 kids, largest field need out of any of our programs. If they come in and they reserve all their fields right at the six-month mark, it doesn't leave a whole lot of field use for anybody else. And same thing for Verdi Valley Little League. We know their program runs March through July, and they are on the youth fields every single day except for maybe Sunday, and then you have unorganized things. But they use all of that field space. And so if anybody else wants to get in on it, it makes it very challenging. So getting those user agreements and that allocation policy will help with that. So some of the key issues, like I said, the first come, first served basis, the six months, and then fee waivers for all of the nonprofits. So if you look at the field rental application, it's broken into categories, and then each category has an associated fee to it. For all nonprofit youth leagues, that fee is currently zero. And so it's fine with me if that's what council's appetite would like to be, but I'd like to have some discussion around that, too, so we can make sure that we're all on the same page in how we're going to move forward. But again, this is really more of a discussion, so we know the marching orders. I don't have any desire one way or the other, aside from field allocation. If we can get some clarity on how we like to do field allocation, that'd be very helpful to staff. And with that, I tried to tie this into how does it meet our strategic plan? What are we doing? If we're using our strategic plan as our guiding document, how does this fit into that? So meeting residents where they are. We ensure access to our facilities and all of our programs. Fiscal optimization. If we're going to talk about fiscal optimization, I feel like we need to at least talk about our fee structure and make sure that that cost recovery and those sustainability levels are where this council would like them to be. Balancing a sustainable community with quality of life by managing growth in a way that's going to preserve our facilities, we can help make sure we have really high-end facilities. So if you go out and you look at our fields right now, you'll see a lot of dead spots in those grass. You'll see a lot of wear and tear on that. And that's because they are overprogrammed. We have zero downtime. We couldn't do seeding this year because we didn't build that into our schedule. And so making sure that we're good stewards of our public spaces and building in that downtime and saying, hey, after X amount of hours, this field needs X amount of recovery, will help keep those fields looking really good and keep our grass from dying out. Investing in existing assets, again, through the maintenance and upkeep, we can extend the life of all of our facilities. And then collaborating on shared goals. There's more than one opportunity year to solve some of these problems. I didn't want to bring a punch list of here's what I want to do, dot, 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 because I want this to be a discussion with council and work at the will of what this council would like to do. But we could collaborate with the schools, could look at sharing fields for leagues, could look at working with community partners, any of those different things that this council would like us to do, we can explore to make sure we're hitting on that goal of collaborating with others. And with that, council, I promised you a very short presentation. So that is that. If there's any questions or if you have anything you'd like to throw my way, I'd be happy to try and answer that for you.
So if the biggest part of the concern is the fields themselves and the use of the fields, I would like to, I am interested in finding out what we can do to kind of, you know, alleviate the stress on the fields and still meet people's needs. And I don't know how scheduling of the fields can work. My response, of course, has been to still stay, we need more fields. We really need more space for things like soccer and football specifically. I think the Little League fields are good. Softball fields are fine. Basketball court's good. The swimming pool is what it is. But yeah, the fields are really kind of the sore spot, the shortcoming, as far as I can tell. Is that, do you think that's true?
Madam Mayor, council, I do think that the highest community need is on our fields just because that's the highest level of competition we currently have. But if you were to just look back even five years, half of the organizations that I had listed there weren't in existence or weren't operating. And so as Cottonwood continues to grow, and what you're seeing is you're seeing a lot of people my age who now are having kids, and those kids are what's going into those programs. And so you're seeing that shift, creating that extra burden on our fields. Now, if we continue to see that and other organizations come in, so like I said, the Verdi Valley Christian School who wants to use the pool, that will be a very hard puzzle to solve because there truly just isn't additional time in the day that that pool can be used. So yes, under our current conditions, our fields are the highest priority.
So the IGA with Mingus is the only intergovernmental agreement that we have with any organization. Are there others that we might forge an intergovernmental agreement with? Or will all of these, do you see these as just being use agreements, seasonal use agreements?
Yeah. So Madam Mayor and our legal counsel over there, Mr. John, can step in if I misstep here. None of those other organizations are government entities, so an IGA wouldn't be suitable for them.
Right.
That doesn't mean we can't explore one with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District for shared use of their fields. I've spoken to Manager SaFuentes just briefly about an opportunity there, but we've not really run anything to ground because we wanted to make sure we had this discussion first. And I'm not just going out doing things that I think are the solution when it's really you guys who get to make that decision on what we're going to do.
Well, American Heritage Academy is a school. It is a nonprofit, but it's also a school. And they have a field that might be suitable for a variety of sports, but I'm not really sure about that.
Madam Mayor, that's a very good thought. I can tell you, AHA is one of our users on our soccer fields. They use our fields to run their soccer leagues. And so although I've not been out to look at their fields, I don't know how usable they would be if they're using ours instead of their own. I don't know. I can look into that.
I don't know either. I don't know why necessarily. Maybe it has to do with goals because otherwise, I don't know why. I don't know what parameters of that field are, but it's a good-sized field. I don't know.
My concern on these fields is I know we give nonprofits -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] -- it'd be like a once every six months, right? Like, you can't have every field, or you can have this. Especially when it's something that takes maintenance, you know? So I guess that's my concern is, I'm all for supporting the 501(c)(3) fees, but at the same time, there should be a limit to how much they get it for free. It costs the city. It costs the taxpayers to do this. So in my opinion, there should be some limit set on how many days they can get.
Absolutely. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dow, so on the converse side of that, the other side of that coin, lots of organizations do it that way for a very specific reason. It is much cheaper for us to turn on lights for AYSO than it is for us to run a soccer program for 800 kids. And so if AYSO didn't run their program, that's 800 kids who are going to be looking for a soccer program that otherwise is going to be on the shoulders of the city to put on. That would probably be an entire staff person for that soccer season just to run that program. And so the consideration there is, is it cheaper for us to support them by doing this than that cost of us deferring that maintenance and shouldering that load? And so it's a very tricky issue to solve. That's one of the reasons I -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] -- did make a phone call today just to make sure what the other jurisdictions are doing. Sedona does give free field use to their youth sports leagues, so that's your AYSO. The actual leagues who are running pay-for-play, every kid gets an opportunity to get out on the field, leagues. It's not your private, making-profit leagues. Clarkdale obviously doesn't have their own field, so the school district does that. I wasn't able to get an answer from the school district on if they -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] -- give their space for free for those youth fields, too. But anywhere down in the valley, everybody just about charges. It's not a unique thing. We're in Verdi Valley because that's just the history of what we've always done. [mimicking a telephone ringing]
Do all of those meet that? Or do all those nonprofits help the city to accomplish a goal like that? So if you had that where you could weigh it, well, I get it, right? You're providing a service to the city. But, you know, I want to have a picnic every weekend at the --
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dow, that would be my recommendation, that if we did choose to move forward with facility use agreements, we would put language in every one of them that says, here is what the city expects if you're going to do this. Your league has to be open to everybody. Every kid has to have an opportunity to play. You have to build in a mechanism for those kids who can't afford it and items like that to make sure if we are doing something, and I don't know the gifting clause, I'll defer to legal on that and city manager. But those are the things that I would encourage council to think about if we're going to move forward with those facility use agreements and that mandate.
Of the youth organizations on this list, which ones are the nonprofits?
Verdi Valley Little League is, AYSO is. Showtime Sports has a wing of a nonprofit, but the Showtime Sports itself is not. Mean Machine Flag Football is. Mingus Mountain Football is. Cottonwood Clippers are. American Heritage, again, is a school. So they're not a nonprofit, but they're a not-for-profit. Same with Mingus Union High School. Arsenal Soccer is a club. Verdi Valley Blitz, I think they're starting a nonprofit, but right now, they're like a club. It's a high cost to play. And then Verdi Christian Academy is, again, a school.
Madam Mayor, if I could chime in here. Jack, for clarification, even the nonprofits charge an entrance fee to their registrants, do they not?
Correct, sir. They do.
You know, it's been my experience in cities, way more than what I've worked at, that typically, cities will grant nonprofits one free use per year. Thereafter, they pay the same amount. We had a very fruitful conversation about this matter at our last director's meeting and recognizing that we have some staff that come from previous experience at other agencies. That was the general rule. The other thing that we arrived at is when you look at even these nonprofits, AYSO, they are charging a fee. And it's not uncommon for those board members to, you know, have, say so in what goes on. I think if this is planned, and we're simply talking about facility use agreements right now, at some point, there would be stages before we start to talk about any costs associated with it. This is more just about arranging it and making sure, if for no other reason, that we could lay off portions of fields and help to grow grass back. But I think it's important to realize that for these groups, just saying they're nonprofits doesn't mean they're not bringing in money and have the wherewithal to pay a fee. Obviously, we don't want to burden some on them, but at some point, for the larger organizations, it may mean $5 additional registration per child to be able to pay, you know, $2.50 an hour for a sports fee. And I'm getting way ahead of the cost. This is just if the council supports that. And before I get off, I have the mic and to what Mr. Teal said. Him and I had a conversation about utilizing sports fields at the schools because it's quite common for cities to partner with those schools. But that would require some initial conversations with him, and we didn't want him to go down that road until we had at least some direction with council that you folks would consider [mimicking a telephone ringing] because sometimes that means, okay, having -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] -- while it's going on. And so there could be some costs that are incurred with that. Of course, we could factor that into any facility use agreement and the offset to that. But we could immediately expand our sports fields by being able to do a partnership like that without necessarily having to build fields. Fields are nice, and we can get grant money generally all day long to build facilities. What we can't get is money to operate them and maintain them. And that's where a partnership with the schools [mimicking a telephone ringing] makes a difference to us as a community.
Ironically, this is going back a ways. I think maybe in 1999, the Parks and Rec Department was really excited that they were able to help light the field at what is now the Cottonwood Community School. It's that field that's kind of behind what used to be the elementary school and next to, next to the middle school. And there were, you know, various groups who were using that field other than the school. And that was one of the reasons that the city had partnered with them to help them get that, the fields lighted so that some of the activities that were taking place after school and in the evening time could carry on on that particular field. And yeah, there might be other opportunities for that, and they really are worth considering so that we can kind of guide some of these groups who need a field to some alternative field other than what's at the kids' park.
So Mr. Teal, can I just ask a follow-up question to what's just been said? I thought I heard the comment that the AHA folks or kids come here while they have, they do have a field. So it makes me think, if we go beyond the city of Cottonwood facilities, are there sufficient number and caliber of fields that would be available to the city?
And if I could just piggyback off that, because I'm curious how the Camp Verdi Sports Complex played into this as well.
Yeah. Got it. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Dow, so is there enough field space within our region? Probably there is. If everybody wanted to be a willing partner, we probably could make it work. Are they all the same quality? No, not really. And then what we found last year is, if you guys remember, AYSO was one of the groups who was very adamant that they weren't going to use the Cottonwood Kids Park anymore because of all the things that were going on with the slag pile and all of that stuff at the time. And so they voluntarily dropped their program from our facilities and started using Camp Verdis. Well, the parents did not love that. They did not want to have to drive their children all the way over to Camp Verdi for a 45-minute soccer practice. And so that is one of the considerations when we -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] Is there enough space? Yes, but the biggest burden is on our residents. [mimicking a telephone ringing] Areas. They don't want to drive outside of this area. So if everybody was willing, probably there would be enough capacity within the region. I don't believe that that is the case. And then you also look at inconsistent fees. The schools all charge facility use fees. So if you wanted to go practice on Mingus, you're paying a premium for that space. And same thing with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. And that's another one of the burdens is because we don't charge, there's plenty of space that is open, but because they have to pay for that space, they'd rather not. So they just shift that burden back to us to mitigate that cost for them.
Down to some basics, it sounds like where I would start in the simplest form is just to prioritize, which I think you've already done, and prioritize to who? Cottonwood residents. And prioritize nonprofits, yes or no? And I liken this to our payments that we make to the nonprofits that we have money to. [mimicking a telephone ringing] Make sense and start there. And then, and we absolutely need, nonprofit doesn't mean they're not making money. Embry-Riddle, for example, [mimicking a telephone ringing] in Phoenix, they're nonprofits and they make a lot of money, but they put it back --
These guys don't. Pardon? These guys don't.
I'm talking about, I'm not saying them specifically. I don't mean them. I'm talking about --
I know.
-- some nonprofits. Again, I'm not talking about these specifically, but that's where we could -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] And so that's where I would start, just to start to prioritize it and then go from there. Does that make sense or not?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Wildon, so yes, I totally understand what you're talking about. And I'd be lying if I told you I haven't already put something together that's bones. What I want to make sure I'm not doing is [mimicking a telephone ringing] simply create a structure so I can wrap my brain around the questions I needed to get answered. So I've not had community input yet, so I don't want people to think that Jack has created this process and it's going to be force-fed to us. That's not it. I've created structure that allows me to know what questions I need to ask to get answered. So one of those things would be is how do we give priority levels to people? Is it based on the number of registrations? Is it based on the number of registrations for Cottonwood? Is it based on the usage? Is it based on how much each organization is willing to pay? Or any number of things that could be included? So that would be a consideration I would bring forward after council gave direction and we worked with a community group to figure out how this structure all comes together in the end.
Well, then, the next question is, you know, how many people do you want to piss off? Because the more complicated you make it, the more opportunity somebody's going to have to complain. So, I mean, I try to find the most direct route from A to B, and that'd be my preference. Just try to start with the most simple solution possible. You have this -- [mimicking a telephone ringing] What comes to mind is, you know, you have a golf course and you have available tee times. You're not, you know, are you prioritizing who gets these better tee times based on, you know, how much they spend at the golf course or what, you know, do they belong to the club or this or that? And, you know, after a while, you drive, you know, you have all these possibilities. Or do you just say, here are the tee times, [mimicking a telephone ringing] see if you can get this tee time, and if you can't, then try for another tee time? I'm just really, you know, like I said, you have a lot of organizations, you have, there's limited space. You're not going to be able to please everybody. Somebody's going to be irked. And it's just, how many people do you want in that situation?
[mimicking a telephone ringing] I think Cottonwood residents should be [mimicking a telephone ringing]. That's my main point on that one.
And employees.
And employees, absolutely. Yeah.
But what does that mean? Is it based on, well, Mean Machine Flag Football has this percentage of Cottonwood residents versus, you know, some other football league? I don't understand. And if you give priority one year and their percentage of residents drops next year, do they, you know, just, how many rabbit holes do you want to go down?
Well, the good news is that most of these programs are staggered. They're not all occurring at the same time in the same place.
Then we shouldn't have --
You know, like, the Cottonwood Clippers are through the summer, but once the kids go back to school, that's the end of their season. But now Mingus kids have gone back to school, and that's when their swim team starts. And some of these other things, too, are not really necessarily in conflict, and some of them can be staggered. You know, they don't all have to occur at the same, in the same moment. But I think, you know, the main issue that we want to look at, if I can just kind of bring back the focus, we're just kind of asking the question tonight is, should we have agreements in place with each of these sports organizations? Is this something that we should do, setting fees aside? And also, at times, yes, we may have to prioritize or consider certain factors. But at least for the moment, the one thing that we want to make a decision about is, should each of these have an agreement with the city? And my response would be yes. I think that that's appropriate, that we have, we already have a model for that, and it can be adapted if need be. But I think it's a good idea for each of these organizations to come to the city and make the request and understand that it's a request. They're not automatically entitled to use whatever they want of city facilities. So they will come and request and be notified whether or not their request can be granted. Is there time in the day? Is there enough [mimicking a telephone ringing] ability to go around? So what we can do is, we will continue to have discussions. We don't have to decide tonight what we think the fees for these things ought to be. All we need to do tonight is think about whether or not we agree that there should be agreements in place for the use of city facilities. Is that correct? Do you, is that what we're looking at?
Madam Mayor, I would say that that is the request for this council-adjunct item, but any discussion -- But any discussion we have is helpful in forming those. And so if we're leaning one way or another, it's always helpful to know in advance. And to your point, Madam Mayor, about maybe not having compression in all areas as we speak, again, if I would have brought this to council three years ago, we wouldn't have had the same level of compression. So I think if we have an opportunity to do it, we should be a little forward-thinking and plan for that growth, because it's only a matter of time before the next youth service provider comes in and wants to do something. And so the more we can put in place now, the easier it will be to manage that growth as we move forward.
I believe that we should, Mr. Teal, have an IGA with every, be written in that IGA like it is, I believe, with the Little League, that there is a minimal fee. But I also know that they are.
What benefit does an IGA or a contract do? What does it do for us? Does it do anything more than what we already asked of them when they fill the form out? I guess that's where I'm lost, is what does it do for us?
Yeah. So, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. DeWilla, so, yes, we, within there, we can look at having a sort of agreement with every single one of these. That's what we're hoping to get out of this, whether it makes sense for an IGA for a government entity or just the facility use agreement. The goal is to get everybody on one. Councilmember Dow, to answer your question, it's really about clarity and defining roles and responsibilities, so that way there's transparency and a breadcrumb trail of how did we get to where we're going. So this past year, you guys all, like I said, received some very pointed emails from people making very specific accusations. And so it was a very time-consuming process to go back through and to show that we did everything the way it was supposed to be done as best as we could. And so by having these agreements, you're setting terms and conditions and really laying the groundwork for anybody to come in and be able to follow that trail of breadcrumbs to get to the same result.
Plus, it, from a liability standpoint, would protect the city.
It does. We do have other things in place to guard from that. Any of these has to give us a certificate of insurance, naming us an additional chair and endorsements and all of those things. So there are other pieces we put into play here to help protect the city. But I think the more we have lined out in paper, the less subjectivity you have and the less of Jack Teal making Jack Tatership decisions. That's a coined phrase.
I would like that term included in the use agreement, though.
Right. I would like to talk about the use agreement that you're using now. And the one for the Little League, it lays out specifically what fields they could use. Now, would that be the case for other, I mean, could that be possible with all of these other to lay out what it was going to be? Or just to have an agreement where it says the user may not use the city facilities unless pre-scheduled with the city parks and accretion due to the city reservation system? Is that, would that be an agreement that allows them to make these other reservations rather than a specific, I guess that's what I'm saying. How could you give a specific field to everyone as this agreement has?
Got it. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mosley. So to answer your question, yes, we could do that if that's the direction council would want to go. If they want to leave it more broad, that's okay, too. Either way, will work. Again, it's about creating the breadcrumb trail to follow it. So what we would want to be cautious of is, we have youth sport fields for softball and t-ball. They're very clearly for that use, right? They're designed as diamonds for youth softball and t-ball. So at what point do we want to give a priority to the specific use of sport versus a competing use of sport? So if it comes up and I have a football team and a softball team competing for that same field space, how do we give priority, knowing those fields were built specifically for that purpose and we're making them work for additional purposes? So that's why in there, for the Little League contract, we put in there, very specifically we put that in for an issue, they wanted to do baseball over here on the adult fields. And at that point in time, they didn't have any sort of agreement saying they can use these fields. And so I requested that be in that contract, so we could give them that fields under the same conditions we were giving the other fields. So that's why it was laid out in there. The other ones probably are not as meaningful, because we don't really have specific use fields. Your soccer fields at the Cottonwood Kids Park, I suppose, they do have goals, they're very clearly meant to be soccer fields. But anytime you get one big blank slate of grass, that field is whatever you want it to be. And so you'll never hear me say soccer fields. You will always hear me say athletic fields, because if I label them soccer fields, well, you bet soccer folks get really mad when I put a football team out there.
Right. I mean, earlier this summer, I saw soccer out here on one of the baseball diamonds, right? So that was made, an effort to accommodate evidently.
To accommodate. And so the reason you get compression on these fields more than all the others is simply the lights. We only have lighted fields on our softball and baseball diamonds. No other field in Cottonwood has sports lighting. And so, again, not putting the cart in front of the horse, one of the solutions to help expand capacity would be lights at the kids' park. Now you're able to take that very large, open space and extend its usable hours purely by just putting lights. We don't need to build another huge field. We can extend the lights on fields that we already have that then create that same extension of use that we're looking for by building additional capacity.
But you're comfortable with this use agreement? Is this one you would be willing to use for these others?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mosley, I, not to be biased towards it, I helped craft that specific one, so I am a little biased to it. There are still things I would change from that. I don't think it gave enough flexibility for the city to come in and say, these are still my fields and we're going to do what we want with them. So there was very clearly, and again, I think it'll be part of the process for this, what do we do when we have very large sports tournaments want to come in? So Cottonwood is very unique in that we are one of the only providers with eight fields in the same area. Everywhere else, we have to piece out all over town, and that's Flagstaff and Prescott and Prescott Valley included. We are the only complex that has eight fields in one space, which is very attractive to outside organizations that want to come and bring in tournaments, that then bring in tourism and hotels and everything else. This specific use, we had one user do that, but if you look very clear inside that contract, it says that Little League does have the primary ability to book those fields out. And so I was very polite, and I said, please, may we? And they said, absolutely not. And so we could have gone through and just said, well, I'm going to cancel the contract for convenience, because we have that ability in there. It's not really being a nice partner. And so I didn't want to do that. But I would change language in there, specific to give us more flexibility for when those big tournaments come, if it makes sense to do.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, because I know we had one softball tournament two or three years ago. It brought in a lot of people, and the hotels are full, the restaurants were packed. So we still have the ability to do that, is my question. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. Madam Mayor and Councilmember, so that specific tournament you talked about was actually the Little League State Tournament. And so we are very blessed to get that tournament that brought, like, I don't know, 70 teams or something like that from out of town to our area. And so, again, being good partners with that. But we did extend and use the adult fields on some of those as well.
Do all of these guys have, like, a season? And, you know, how long are some of these seasons as opposed to others?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, all of them do have their preferred season, and most of them are three to four months long, like in the instance of Verde Valley Little League. You start your tryouts in February, and then you have opening day in March, and then the program goes from March through May, but then you have All-Stars, and then you have the travel teams that make the state tournaments. And so a program that really is a two- to three-month-long program takes up half of the year, because they're doing all these great, incredible things. And I don't know if you know this, Cottonwood produces really great talent in all of our sports. If kids choose to pursue that later on in their secondary educations, I'm outside of high school. But, so all those seasons get extended pretty drastically. For AYSO Soccer, they usually start right at the school year and run through November-ish. But again, based on how many registrations you get, that can extend your season, that can shorten your season. So any year, it's a little bit different, and then they go right into club and travel, too. And so AYSO does have travel teams, part of AYSO, where you get all your All-Stars together, and then you're going out and you're competing against other regions. So they all have their own seasons, none of them are very short, and they all extend way further than what their initial projections typically are.
You mentioned that Showtime Sports has a nonprofit portion, but how are they different from AYSO? And would that, would we potentially want to be looking at a variance in fees because they're only, they only have a nonprofit aspect, but in fact are not necessarily in totality a nonprofit?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, that's a very great question. That was actually one of the heartburn points for our community. So Showtime Sports is, on paper, a for-profit league. I can tell you that they don't charge enough to make a profit. It's a break-even league for them, maybe a little extra over to turn around and put it back into the program. But Showtime Sports, what they do with their stuff is they really enhance their programs. So every game, you always get a player of the game, and that player gets a gift card for Nike or something like that. You get a heads-up play. And so they pour money back into that program to enhance that program for the kids. So they take you down for your basketball championship games, and they rent the court at the Phoenix Suns and allow the kids to go out there and play games on the Phoenix Suns court. And so they're not for profit, they are for-profit on paper, but they do try to pour that money back into the program. So their nonprofit portion is the part they use when they're trying to get fee waivers and things of that nature. So I would say, talking about if we wanted to do some sort of fee waiver for them in addition to, might be worth at least discussing, because they do a really great job with the program. And on paper, they do the same thing as everybody else, they just aren't listed as a nonprofit.
Okay. I appreciate it, but a kid, you know, who plays for Showtime Sports is, you know, putting the same wear and tear on a field as someone who's playing for a for-profit organization. And I think it's only fair that, you know, I'm sure, you know, on the surface, there are people for these organizations who run them who would object to having to pay a fee for the use, but I think it's fair for them to pay a use fee. Because like I said, they're putting the same amount of wear and tear on the field as anybody else.
Yeah. And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mark, so that was my point, is I, we might create other issues by charging Showtime, but not charging the others who are true nonprofits. And I think that was the question that was asked, if we would consider a fee waiver for that. And I don't know that if we were charging everybody, I would come in and ask for an exemption for Showtime. I don't see myself doing something like that if that was part of what your statement was.
Well, I just, personally, I'm not sure where the nonprofit part even comes into play, to be honest with you. I mean, to me, being a 501(c)(3) means it just expands your ability to find different sources of raising money.
Yeah. For our purposes, sir, it only comes into play because it's listed in our category as a fee waiver. And so because council sets and designates those fees, that is what I live by. And so that is part, again, not part of the discussion tonight to the mayor's point, this is really about, do we want the agreements? But that is in the facility use agreements, or in the field rental agreements, rather.
Well, for me, you know, the use agreement is a simpler discussion. I think it makes sense for the organizations to sign a use agreement or an IGA, whichever ever is more appropriate, because, you know, to me, it protects the city. But it shouldn't, you know, again, in my opinion, it shouldn't give any organization the impression that it gives them scheduling priority.
So currently, when they rent a field, they don't sign anything?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dow, so they do, but it's just a standard application. So it's like if you, as an individual, wanted to come in and rent the fields, you're filling out the same thing for that one-day, single use as what we have these youth sports organizations fill out for their season. And so it gets, put yourself in Sarah's shoes, bless her heart, she gets one application that has a million dates on it with a million fields, and she's expected to make heads or tails of that. It is very challenging. So a lot of the times, what they'll do is say, I want field 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 from March through June. She's like, well, it's not super reasonable. And so we have to go through and then figure out what we can, what we can't do, and then the application never matches actually what they're using, because they submit that once, and then we have to figure out where their actual use is throughout the time. And so that's one of the pain points that we're trying to solve through this, is if we have the agreement, we can lay out in the agreement what fields they can use, when they can use them, if we want to look at priorities, how that priority level works, and things to that nature.
Mr. Teal, would the facility use agreement disadvantage any of these organizations? Would any of these organizations be more disadvantaged than the others by the terms of the current use agreement format?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, it could, it could not. It really is going to be based on the direction of council and how we want to mold this. So what I would say is, if you look at any sort of prioritization, club sports are probably going to be your least level of priority, which could make them getting filled rental space pretty challenging. So there's things, of course, we can put in, inside of those that still mitigate that. But your club sports usually are your, choose a club soccer, you're paying in the thousands of dollars to be on a club soccer team. Now, it's, you're learning really high-level skills, you're traveling throughout the state, you're playing high-level competition, but it's not something that is affordable to everybody. And so right now, and not to pick on Arsenal, Arsenal is a nonprofit, and they charge their kids thousands of dollars to play and then get free filled rentals from Cottonwood. And so that is the worst-case scenario, obviously. That's the biggest light that we're shining on that one. So they could be disadvantaged if we were to go to a prioritization style. But again, there's things we can put in place to still allow them. So we'd say, everybody make your request, staff will manage how those requests get fulfilled, to make sure not one organization is being overly burdened as opposed to the others.
We're talking about the structure of the use agreement, right?
Uh... Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mosley? Yes. And just in general, if council would like to move forward with the use agreement, I don't expect you to tell me line item per line item what you want to see in there. Staff can go back, what I'll do is I'll put together a facility use form that staff feels comfortable with, that's taken into account some input from the community. I'd get that over to legal for review, and I'd get it over to Mr. Sifuentes. And if they're both comfortable with it, then that's when we would bring that back for council to adopt that form in that fashion.
I mean, that's what I would like to see.
I would like to see that as well, and I would just like to second Councilmember Mark's earlier comment about keeping things as simple as possible to minimize the administrative burden for staff and the complexity that you described.
Yeah, I agree with everybody so far. We need one.
Although, I will comment that it's going to be difficult. I mean, there are going to be complexities to this, and that's just the way it is. But the point is to have everybody, you know, what we're really trying to do is, to use a sports analogy, is level the playing field so that everybody has the opportunity to, you know, to get in and get something that they want for themselves without a lot of discrimination involved. I'm not really interested in telling, saying, yeah, it can be these kids, but not these kids. They're all, to me, a bunch of kids, and, you know, in some cases, they're even older kids. But I want everybody to have the opportunity to use the fields if it's at all possible, or to use other facilities as well. But there are limitations, and that has to be considered. But those things can be considered. But those things can be considered one at a time, case by case. They don't have to be decided by a use agreement. The use agreement can be more general and more applicable to all of the organizations that are interested in. So that's what I'm interested in, and we can, you know, we can parse the wording once we see it. So this does not have to be the end of our conversation. I think what we are trying to do tonight is simply agree that we feel there is value in having a use agreement for each of these organizations.
And just as a point of clarification, Mayor Shaw is talking about equity and access to these resources, but I also heard earlier prioritization of access. So I'm kind of interested, for council as a whole, in terms, so we can provide guidance to Mr. Teal, like, where do we come out on that? Do we think that it should be a level playing field, or do we think that some groups should have priority access?
I'm for, obviously, the contract, or whatever we call it, right? But I'm also for prioritization, because, listen, I paid thousands upon thousands of dollars for my son to play club baseball, and guess what? That was a choice I made. That was a choice I made because they had coaches that we paid, who were semi-professional, professional ballplayers, who did that. I could have very well, easily, left him in Little League and allowed him to participate with all the other kids, right? I still had an avenue. I chose to put him in that, and therefore, I knew that that was going to be a cost associated with it. However, to prioritize somebody who is ready to commit that kind of funds to their child and prioritize them over Little League players who don't have that opportunity, I don't agree with. And I say that just because I think that, as a parent, if I'm going to commit to that, I'm committing to it. I can let my kid play in Little League and have volunteer coaches, and it costs me nothing more than the uniform, and, you know, do my thing. But when it comes to club, I was a, we were a club people for eight years, but guess what? We committed to it. I was broke, but we committed to it. So I think there should be a prioritization, somehow. I don't know what that looks like, but somehow.
So Madam Mayor and council, what I'm hearing is, all on the same page, about bringing structure of an agreement in place. I can do that, that's in my notes. So what I would like to do, and make sure that this is okay with council, I can put together three versions of that. I can give you a very straightforward A to B to Councilmember Marks, and just say, "Here's the easiest way to do this." We can put something in there that has some criteria, and says, "Here's a little bit of some meat to this." Or I can bring one that is just exhaustive, and show you, "Here's how we can do this," and create the prioritization. And then from there, council can decide what they have an appetite for, if there's pieces they like of one, if there's pieces they like of another, and then use that to shape that final outcome.
And I'm happy to do that, but I'm also interested primarily in what you and your staff want to be saddled with, rather than just, you know, I don't want to be handing these people a 12-page contract with a bunch of legalese in it. I, you know, I want a clear-cut agreement that gets to the point and helps everybody, including staff, process these requests and create, I'm not sure about, as I say, I'm not really certain about prioritization, because I'm still thinking that there's a possibility of accommodating most everyone at some time or another, maybe not all at once, but at some point. And it's a scheduling concern as much as anything else. But I don't really know. All I'm saying now is, is that, you know, it would be nice to have a clear-cut agreement for each of these organizations to get on paper. And, you know, with that, we're going to attach their insurance information, so that we know that they have the proper indemnification to, you know, to take care of those who are under their auspices, and that they are not, the city is not liable.
Just for clarification purposes, Mayor, I'm not suggesting that we eliminate somebody because they don't make the prioritization. Other groups just get it before this one. So if scheduling works out, well, then everybody gets a spot.
Right. Well, right. I mean, I don't want the Little League players kicked off the field so that a semi-professional club can come in and use the fields. Obviously, that won't do. That's, yeah, I understand. I know what you mean, and I think ultimately, there may be occasions where prioritization is required, but we don't have to presume that going in. What we need right now is agreement to pursue a use agreement. It's not an IGA. The only one on the list here who has an IGA is Mingus Union High School, and that's for the swim team. Everybody else would have a use agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Unless it made sense for another form of agreement. Now, there's some legal stuff there that I don't fully understand, but sometimes an MOU is better, sometimes an IGA is better. So I'd work with John and his team to tell me which form we're using, but yes.
Okay.
I imagine all of those mostly facility use agreements.
And, Madam Mayor, if I could, and the mayor of council, one of the things that will go along with us developing this agreement that Jack glossed over a little bit, is a facility analysis to determine who's currently using when, and that'll kind of help start to sharpen the pencil a little bit as to when folks are using it and try to eliminate those. The other thing, and again, I'm getting out in front of this process, but one of the main ways to keep folks from just saying six months in advance, "Okay, I need 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday," is a fee. And the fee, when you say, "Okay, if you want that, then your fee per hour is going to be eight hours per day for six months." And then very quickly, they'll realize, "No, maybe we're not going to use it as much as I thought." And then you'll start, like I said, we're not talking about a fee that's going to put a nonprofit out of business. It's just something that helps us to better maintain the field. But it also, and I've been through this same development, it helps people narrow down the actual time that they want to use it, so they're not just preempting other users from using that same space.
Right.
I'm just all about Cottonwood. I mean, when I say priority, I just, I think Cottonwood ought to come first. That's who we serve.
I also agree that...
Whatever that means.
Sorry.
Good.
I also agree that you should have time built in for the fields to recover, so. And I know, I don't know how you do that, but good luck.
Right.
You have other fields to go to. That's kind of where we are. We're in need of other space, and that's why cooperating with the schools might give us a little bit of an open option. Because, yeah, the field, you know, the school field where the community school is, is a lighted field. It can be used, and I don't think it is used all that much, but that's an opportunity that can be explored.
I just think this is a good step. Do you have, are we kind of in agreement, or enough of us for you? Is it my question?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, if I may, I think the last part of this discussion, and Mr. Sefuentes' intervention, is kind of highlighting, I don't think we're really just talking about an agreement. The agreement, as you all mentioned, it should be short, it should be relatively uniform. If there's anything that's customized in it, probably to the extent if we're locking down people's schedules, maybe that would be customized, like as an attachment. I think we're really talking about a facility use policy. That's where the priorities would be. That's where, I think even Jack brought up that we've got an existing category of fee waiver bases, if that's something that you wanted to revise. I mean, this is a more complicated, I think, policy document. This is not stuff that we would try to cram into the text of a contract.
Right.
I think one question, one question on the way to that policy is, do you want to have a contract? Do we want to require all these groups to have contracts that are regular, recurrent users? I think I've heard, and Jack, I think in his recap, has heard you as a yes. And then there's been some feedback into the, many more questions than that, that would have to go into a policy.
So does a use agreement take the form of a contract? Is that what you're presenting? It, you know?
I believe so, Mayor, yeah.
So, okay.
And I think the policy, which would maybe be one line of many in a facility use policy, would be, you know, if you are a recurring user, or, and we would have to set some sort of benchmark of when you have to have this agreement, right? It's not, if you're a nonprofit, you have to have an agreement to use our field, right? If you're doing it once, you know, maybe we wouldn't. But if you're going to use it a certain amount of times, or if you want to book it a certain period in advance, something like that would trigger for groups like this that they would need this agreement before they could do that.
So that lets us off the hook. We'll just send the agreement to you, sir.
Perfect.
You will review it and let us know if it's properly prepared or not, and if it, you know, if the necessary items are in there for, to fulfill the city's requirements for use agreement.
Certainly, Mayor, we'll be happy to help with that, but our payback will be that Jack is going to send the facility use policy to you.
Right.
And that's going to be way more work than the agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
I will say, I do most things with John's input.
Okay.
Even the things that John's like, "Jack, don't call me for this."
Just out of curiosity, on the field maintenance, you know, you're plugged into other parks and rec managers, directors, you know, how do they do, how do they generally do their field maintenance? Do they have blackout periods where they're doing overseeding, or how do they?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Marks, every organization is slightly different, but general terms, as you always build in downtime. Now, not every, as you've come to learn, I'm sure, Cottonwood is unique in a lot of things on how we do it, just because of how our organization is. We're an annexed population of 12, 13,000, with a service population much bigger than that. And so that creates capacity issues and compression issues in just about everything we do. And so not every organization has those, but it is a pretty standard to, after 100 hours of field time, you let that field rest for 72 hours or any of those. So there are standards, that's really great. We can always pull from the standard and use those to help shape our policy, knowing that we may have to be a little less strict on that because of the capacity issues that we do have.
What would it take for us to get the field over here up and moving at some point? I mean, it's kind of a disaster at this point. It hasn't been watered or seeded or anything in years. It does grow some, a nice crop of weeds every now and then, when the rains come, but other than that, it hasn't been cared for for quite a few years. It looks like my front yard. So...
I hope code's not in here.
What I'm wondering is, is, you know, is there a point at which we could, we could kind of bring that area back to life and make it usable as field space for some of those who want those activities?
Absolutely. So, Madam Mayor, for one quick clarification, which field space are you talking about? The one directly...
I'm talking about right beyond, yeah, right beyond the Little League fields and alongside of the dog park and the garden.
Got it. So as many of you know, that area was preliminary plotted to be a big athletic green space in the last update of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And so we had put money in a budget, about $250,000, to do a study on what that's going to be. And with that, that was supposed to provide us plans, figure out the steps we needed to take. In brief, it's going to be about $5 million, estimating, to get that space into a usable, really good space that doesn't have constant flooding and water retention issues. And then you're looking at shuffling different things. And then this is where utility director Whitmer and I, Mr. Whitmer and I always don't agree and see eye to eye, is the use of the water. That is going to be a large consumption of water to irrigate a field of that magnitude. And so we'd have to then look at, do we have the appetite for that as well? Originally, there was a conversation about using some reclaimed water, essentially, and that no longer is an option on the table for us. And so you'd be looking at either pulling from our share of the ditch, which I'm not in favor of, just because of the issues that has with the irrigation system, or using city water to irrigate fields of that size. And so that was in my discussion with the city manager, Sefuentes, over there. It might just be better for us to see how we can co-op with other places and use fields that are already there, that are already being irrigated, and take more advantage of that, so we aren't overburdening our water.
How about if we build a wastewater treatment facility?
I like where you're going, but there's a lane, and I'm going to stay in that one.
Right. I mean, you're talking about possibilities, and what about lights at Kids Park? You had mentioned that. Has that ever been, a price ever put on that?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mosley, it's actually one of the projects I've requested a vendor work on for us. So we just had to replace a ton of lights down here through Musco, and when I had their reps up here, I begged, pleaded, borrowed for them to go do an assessment of that field, and so they are actively working to get me general quotes, in which I hope to bring back through the budget cycle, to see if we can either find some grants for that, or provide capital improvement money, or something along those natures to help out with that one consideration, because I know I threw that out, and I don't want to make it seem like that is the greatest solution. Keep in mind, that is in a neighborhood. And so if we're going to light up that space, you're lighting up that neighborhood as well. But I will still bring it back to you.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, just a light would have to be off by ten o'clock anyway, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the way it is down here, and there are neighborhoods along here, too. I know, because they shine in my window, so. So if we could, at this point, I think we can continue the discussion, but it might be helpful if we just clearly agree. And so I'll just ask each of you, are you okay with developing use agreements for these sports organizations?
So, Madam Mayor, real quick, if I can just, further clarification that, we're looking at a facility use policy now, rather than just the agreement, and then the agreement can reference that policy, and say, "You're doing all this in accordance with this policy" that we will then develop. I'll work with John, John will rubber stamp it like he does all my stuff, and then we'll send that to council.
Yeah, that's what he does.
The ink is red. Like, that part, we can all, we know that's true.
All right. Well, let me restate it, then. Are we, as a group and individuals, prepared to look at policy that would guide a use, a facility use agreement?
Yes. I don't know if we should do this individually.
Yeah, right.
I think... We're doing it. Be quiet.
No, I don't think we can do this, because it becomes more of a vote than it does. I mean, I think we've all kind of given, I think we've given our direction. My fear is that somebody says...
I just want to ask every, I'm just, I'm not taking a vote, I'm asking the question and making sure that everyone has had a moment to voice their opinion. It's just an opinion. Felicia?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Okay. Chris?
I think I've stayed in my position.
Joy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I, we all agree that we're, we will be happy to take a look at policy and see how that can fit with a facility use agreement for each of these organizations.
Got it.
But feel free to continue the discussion beyond this point. I just want you to have the clear direction. I don't want to send you out wondering, "What did they want?"
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I think, I believe I got what I need for my next marching orders. The last question I have for you, and maybe Mr. Sefuentes will take this under operations, is there a timeframe you would like to see this back, knowing that starting January, most groups are going to be reaching out to us for their springtime calendars?
Well, we're taking November and December off, so I'm not sure how you're going to get this out.
Yeah, I can always work with city manager Sefuentes on that as well.
We, yeah, we have two meetings in December. We will be meeting 12... We will be meeting twice, so we're not really just going on Christmas break, and we'll be back in, early in January. So if, if, if it makes sense to, to do that, then you can certainly give it a shot. If the policy is not prepared, I, you know, we'll carry on anyway, I guess. How long does it take to construct a policy?
I can check.
So I can do it very quickly. How long does it take to construct and get through John?
Yeah.
It depends on how well I do the first version.
And also, again, as a reminder, the policy, we'll need to accompany, he will need to complete the analysis of what's going on...
Right.
Before we could, that'll help us in, in navigating through a policy. And what we'll need to have in terms of, maybe the six months isn't palatable at that point, maybe it's a three-month in advance that you can book these fields. And so, all of that will have to go into that policy.
And do we want to attach fees to it as well?
I don't think we're ready to broach that yet. I, I wouldn't, I could not recommend that to this council, prior to Mr. Teal engaging the community in a policy.
So is, can you talk more about that? The community engagement piece?
I, I'm sorry, ma'am, I, I think it'd be a little premature at this point, because we, we would need to kind of, we don't even know what that looks like, and whether it's going to be a simple public meeting, or whether he does a working group. I think we need to kind of take a look at the depth of what this policy may look like, given the, the varied input that we get tonight, and then we would be able to do so.
Well, you know, my opinion, you know, in terms of any kind of policy, no matter what it is, whatever the time is needed to get it right, getting it right's better than getting it fast. But I did have another question about the second slide. That slide? Nope, that slide. So if I bring my ice skates to the skate rink, I'll be, I'll be okay, right?
I suppose you could do it once. You know how many times I've looked at this and never realized I put an ice skate in that?
It's just the wrong skate, I think.
Uh, this meets on there, granted, but are pickleball courts and tennis courts, can they be used for the same thing? Or do you reserve them?
We, we don't here.
You don't?
Right.
You segregate yourselves from the tennis players.
That is correct.
I'm curious.
You can ask Jack, if you knew the tennis players, you'd want to be segregated.
Is it better to be a tennis player, or a pickleball player, Jack?
Well, that's, that's a...
I love them all.
You know, come on.
Does council have any further discussion or questions for me? I think I've got what I need.
Well, well, we'll let you go, then. Is, is there any further discussion? With someone...
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
You didn't ask if anybody was opposed.
Tammy, you want me to clear this?
I never do.